Good afternoon. I’m going to call to order the December 16, 2015, meeting of the Eugene City Council. I am Claire Syret, Council President, substituting for Mayor Piercy today, who is out having had a medical procedure earlier today. So our best wishes go out to her and Swift Recovery. We’ve got two items on our agenda today. We’ve got an update on our economic prosperity and creative industries. And following that, we will have a discussion introducing a 350 PPM greenhouse gas target. We’ll talk more about what that exactly means when we get to that item. So, City Manager.
Thank you very much, and I’ll turn it over to Renee and Tommy for the first part of this presentation.
Okay, thank you. We’re here talking about economic prosperity as one of your council goals. This is the second in a series of updates of the baker’s dozen, as coined by Councilor Evans, of those 13 items that we’re looking at focusing on and digging a little bit deeper in depth on how we can move forward in the community. This baker’s dozen item is investment in creative industries. The Regional Prosperity Economic Development Plan identified quality of life and livability as a strength and a strategy that we should be building on for our community. Eugene has a unique creative culture that translates into a distinct competitive advantage because creativity fuels innovation, and innovation fuels industries and organizations that really help our prosperity grow. So that’s going to be the topic for today. And before I introduce Tommy Douglas Anderson, who’s our Cultural Services Director, I’ll just kind of let you know what we’re planning on doing today. Before you look forward, sometimes you have to take a look back. And in 2007, we, you, the City Council, accepted the Cultural Policy Review, which was a ten-year plan for how we support the art and culture community. I’m really happy to say that we’ve made tremendous progress in the last eight years. So we’re going to give you an update on where we are with that. And then we’re going to tell you kind of a little bit about where we are today, and then some of the observations and opportunities as we move forward around creative industries. So I’ll turn it over to Tommy.
Hi, everyone. I’m Tommy Douglas Anderson, as Renee said. And as of last Friday, I have been the Cultural Services Director for the City of Eugene for two years, and excited to be here. But this is my first appearance before council, so I hope that you will all think of this as my dress rehearsal and not be too critical.
Did you bring donuts?
I realize now that was my huge mistake by showing images of donuts and then actually having none to offer to you. So later, I will table that. We’ll put that in the notes for later.
When you’re a seasoned veteran.
Yes. When I’m seasoned, I will bring all the donuts. I’m really excited to share this with you because we’ve got a really great story to tell. The Cultural Policy Review, as Renee mentioned, was approved by council and funded by council in 2007, but it was a process that actually kicked off in 2005. We engaged the University of Oregon Arts Administration Program last year in a study to work with us and help us evaluate the progress of the CPR, where we were, kind of do an evaluative process and look at us both in terms of our metrics, where were we headed, and where are we now? And the news is really, really positive. And there’s going to be a little theatricality in this presentation. I hope you’ll forgive me. The first goal that was laid out in the CPR was to strengthen public and private sector engagement, leadership, and funding for arts and culture. It’s a big mouthful, and it’s a big, big, big goal. And the great thing is, because of really strong partnerships that we have throughout the community, and for us, when we’re all working together, these goals around engagement, leadership, and funding have really moved forward. First, we look at some of our success we’ve had. One of the clearest deliverables that was laid out in the CPR was the development of an organization that would support the connections and connectivity between arts and business. And that’s happened. The ABAE, as it’s known, Arts and Business Alliance of Eugene, which Renee is actually the chair of, she rotated onto our chair this summer, and I’m also a member of, was created in 2008, and that’s when they received their nonprofit certification. And ABAE has been producing events, programs, and creating all kinds of opportunity for artists and business. In fact, we have a new program, which is an Arts and Business Loan Fund, which I think you may have heard about during a previous report we rolled out. We had sort of a soft rollout this summer. This loan program exists to help support the work of Planning and Development and their business loans, and create loan fund opportunities for industries and artists and organizations that don’t have access to traditional financing capital. We’re excited about that program. In addition, BRAVA, when we talk about visibility of arts and engagement, BRAVA is Business Recognizing Arts Vision and Achievement. And it’s an event produced by ABAE that happens twice a year and really calls attention to a lot of the work we’re doing in the community. And then ALES is our newest addition to our programming body here, which is Arts Leaders of Eugene in Springfield. As the acronym would suggest, we do meet occasionally at breweries with a pint in hand to talk about the shared experiences, frustrations, and celebrations that all of us in arts and culture have. It’s a great place to find, you know, community, frankly, to find your next best set designer or grant writer, or to find ways to solve problems as a group. And it’s been really successful so far. When you look at Goal Two, that was around providing comprehensive arts learning experiences for Eugene’s children, youth, and adults. And as you know, that’s a big goal. This is another story and another success story around partnership. We at the city work really hand-in-hand with Lain Arts Council, and Lain Arts Council takes the lead around areas of arts education throughout the community. And they’re really the ones kind of stepping forward and finding ways to both support from an advocacy position the role of arts education in our schools, but also helping really map out where are those areas of opportunity, where are the gaps, and are we providing all the services and programs that we can? We host thousands and thousands of children at the Holt Center as one of our venues as part of that arts education program. We help make that happen. But really, the big moves that we’ve seen since the initiation of the CPR actually revolve around the funding community. The Oregon Community Foundation received the largest bequest in their history and the largest bequest in the history of the state of Oregon from the Fred Fields Foundation, which essentially its main mandate was for arts and education. And OCF has developed this portfolio of funding programs, and really, one of those has been funding our local art core program, which is something that Lain Arts Council runs and is something that we support. We also have different partnerships with the Culture and Education Alliance of Lain County, which is a new organization that has really sprung up in the last year or two. And that group’s really helping map out the opportunities. We want to look at both access to arts education, but you know, there’s the three, we talk about the three pillars of the stool, right? In arts education, there’s performance opportunities, folks, kids attending performances, arts integration, using arts and culture to teach other subjects. You know, how do we use ballet to talk about what was happening during the Russian Revolution? You know, that sort of thing. And then very specific professional education and training in the arts. And so the city supports all three of those measures, but really looking at all three of those legs of the stool, and where are we strongest, and where are those great opportunities? And they’ve made a lot of strides in moving those programs forward, and we’ve supported those through our partnerships with Lain Arts Council. The third is to build audiences for arts and culture in Eugene. This is one of our newest murals from the WJ Skate Park, which you may know of. And you know, we look at that goal both through the lens of, you know, how do we obviously drive more audiences and more folks to attend our events at the Cuthbert and the Holt Center? But really, what’s happening in the national movement in arts administration is really kind of taking a step back and creating a new conversation that’s not about building audiences for, say, certain different genres of art. You know, we don’t see that it’s necessarily the City of Eugene’s job to create new opera audiences, but it is our obligation to create a community of arts participants, you know, to create that larger umbrella where we’re a community of people that attend arts, and we create lots of different points of entry. And that’s what we talk a lot about in Americans for the Arts and the organizations that I work within, is how do we create those points of entry, new ways for new audiences and new folks to come to the arts that may not be through a traditional route or through a traditional school performance? We’ve created a lot of really interesting programs and partnerships. You may have attended some of our Huge Fun events this summer. Huge Fun was sort of the new moniker that we gave to what used to be known as Summer in the City, when we expanded and supported that with greater arts and culture programming. Huge Fun happens all summer long, and actually, all year long. All Hallows’ Eve is an example of one of our most recent events, and we’ll talk about that in a little bit. Huge Fun really gave us an opportunity to expand with that arts audience, and we created a new program called Party on the Plaza, which is a free outdoor arts and culture program that happened on the Holt Plaza area every Thursday throughout the summer. And I think I actually saw a couple of you there. And these were really fun events, but also gave us access to kinds of artists that we wouldn’t normally have access to. This was a program that we worked on in partnership with the Oregon Shakespeare Festival in Ashland, which has a really robust booking capacity, and they bring in all kinds of different arts groups, and frankly, those that represent different communities, communities of color, disadvantaged communities that we might not have access to. And so this was really strong partnership. And then on the participation, how do we help really truly grow arts audiences piece? We look at Eugene a Gogo as one example. Eugene a Gogo is a program through the Arts and Business Alliance of Eugene, which really helped create a marketing platform for all the small artists and organizations in our community that were struggling to come up with their own web presence, to publicize their events. You know, we know that people don’t go to the arts if they don’t know about it. And so creating that mechanism was really important. Also, what we’ve done through the Holt Center and through Cultural Services is we’ve developed a merged marketing team with our Recreation Group, which has given us more marketing capacity at the Holt, so we can support all those resident companies that we work with. Onto Goal Four. I love this photo of this little ballet dancer in one of our dressing rooms at the Holt. Goal Four was strengthening the ability of cultural organizations and artists to serve the community. This was really about creating opportunities for more professional development, you know, for arts administrators, folks struggling to figure out, you know, if you’re an artist, you’re not necessarily a website developer or not necessarily a grant writer. And oftentimes, it’s about how do we help people really, you know, get their look out and seen by, you know, a larger group of folks? So that marketing team that we talked about that supported all of those nonprofits has been formed. And those folks are seeing some really stunning successes, sold-out shows. We grew our in-house email list. I know these are nerdy details, but I get excited about it, from 8,000 to 34,000 in the last year. And we’ve just really put some really rigid thinking and rigor into, okay, how do we really optimize the use of the Holt and Cultural Services sort of marketing communication channel for these groups? Another exciting project is Survival Skills for Artists, which is a whole education program that we work on in partnership with Lain Arts Council. And that’s everything from, you know, tax advice for artists, you know, how do you file, how do you make sure that you’re really leveraging your proper deductions and all those sort of things, to grant writing, building a website to promote your art, you know, how do you kind of commodify if you’re a person who, you know, creates works of art? And then on the right is an image from one of our newest festivals. So Suburban Projections is a project that has existed for many years and was led by Harmonic Lab. And Suburban Projections is a digital art and media festival. It used to be a smaller event, happened in alleys and on sides of buildings where different artists from University of Oregon in the area did projection mapping and really cool digital imagery. And we really see that as an opportunity, and as that is being one of those sort of interesting areas of arts and culture in Eugene that is really unique to this area because of the support of the university and that some of the best thought leaders in digital art are coming out of this town. Our friends at Concentric Sky and Light at Play with their dome and all these other projects that are coming out of the community kind of make us go, all right, in what ways can we really shine a light on this and also kind of push some cultural tourism? So we’ve grown that program. It’s happening in April and is going to be huge and wonderful, and I hope that you will all come and check it out. Goal Five, I apologize, these guys are a little dark, is integrating arts and culture into the fabric of downtown Eugene. That amazing little flame on the right may look familiar to some of you. That’s Colette Ramirez, our Community Events Manager, at one of our awesome events this summer. You know, really, part of what we, when we were talking about Huge Fun was, you know, how do we create that downtown dynamic atmosphere, you know, that both, you know, folks that are established and have lived in Eugene for a long time, but also newcomers, when they come to the city, you know, they perceive this as a dynamic, active, happening kind of place. On the left is an image from All Hallows Eugene, our, you know, weekend of events celebrating Halloween and helping drive businesses, helping drive folks to downtown businesses, pumpkin carving, and Red Wagon Creamery gave away ice cream, and there’s all these amazing programs. The middle’s an image of one of our many public art programs. The public art program has really been growing over recent years, and that investment that the council made originally and making sure that public art was really at the heart of CPR has really paid out. It’s not just percent for art projects that we’re working on, but also looking at the New City Hall and in what ways can we incorporate previous artworks into the new piece? How can we drive a dynamic mural program in the community that gets people excited and helps us turn some vacant or maybe somewhat maligned storefronts into really dynamic, beautiful places? And then on the right, you’ll see an image from one of our electrical box projects where we’re just trying to do some beautification and aesthetic improvements in downtown, but also frankly, creating work and opportunity for artists. We’ve heard a lot of great feedback about all of these programs, and we’re excited to grow that even more. As we move on, here we are today. This is an image from one of those Party on the Plaza events. This is a hip-hop group from Oakland that did a presentation for us and also did a series of master classes afterwards, which was really excellent. And this is actually outside the Holt Plaza, if that makes, if you’re not familiar with the location. That area is a really prime opportunity for us to activate and do some really cool things. And so we’re excited about the potential there. But here’s the other stuff. So there’s all kinds of wonderful things that are happening around programming and around activation, but where do the dollars come from? And is arts and culture a real economic driver in our community? And the answer is yes, and it’s really good news. When you look overall what’s happening, this is a, you may have seen this diagram before, this is a Richard Florida diagram that he uses in talking about the creative class and the growth of creative industries. You really see that, you know, nationally and internationally, and in the last, you know, 200-plus years that this, or 300 years, I guess, that we’re moving towards, that the growth in the creative industries and service industries is sort of unparalleled, while other industries are either languishing or leveling out. I mean, there’s a trend here that’s happening, and we’re seeing it in really sharp relief in Eugene locally. When you look at what this creative and cultural industry is, when we talk about creative industries, yes, there are the traditional ones that you might think of, performing arts, museums, et cetera. But the gaming industry, software development, these are, you know, critical skills and critical jobs and growing industries where, you know, people are using, you know, they’re knowledge workers essentially, solving the problems of the future using creative strategies. And they’re diverse, so that’s the great thing about creative industries. It’s not just one narrow vertical that we, if we put all of our eggs in one basket. Really investing in this and really kind of leveraging the growth we’ve seen has all kinds of ripples. If you look at, we have a really important study that we participate in every five years with Americans for the Arts. It’s called the Arts and Economic Prosperity Study. And this is from 2010. We are just kicking off the 2015 process right now, and we’ll start in January. These are what the national stats look like. So you can see that, I won’t read off all the numbers in front of you, but 4.1 million full-time equivalent jobs exist, and this is specifically the nonprofit arts and culture sector. These aren’t all those other area, or this isn’t software developers and gamers. These are folks that work in nonprofit arts and culture. And the really great news is when we did a local, when we did our local study, this is what it looks like locally. 1,739 full-time equivalent jobs exist in arts and culture in the city of Eugene, in just a nonprofit. We’re not talking about commercial arts or entertainment or movie theaters or any of those other things. $16.1 million in event-related spending, so that’s parking, that’s meals downtown, that’s shopping, were spent by Eugene arts audiences, which is overall, you know, $45.6 million in economic activity generated by the sector. These look like great numbers, and they are. They look even better when you compare them with true comparables. So we looked at Eugene and we compared it to similar study regions within the after survey. So this is apples to apples. We’re not just comparing to national stats. We are overperforming in every single metric, like to 100, to 100% variable. You’ll see the average full-time equivalent job for a city of our size is 836, and we have 1739. You can see, you know, $984,000 in local government revenue has been generated by arts and culture in the 2010 survey compared to comparable communities where it’s only 419. It’s good news. It’s really good news. And when you have a really high-performing or overperforming sector, the best thing to do, I think, is to invest in it. So next, so we’ve talked about CPR and where we were, what the plan was, and how we’ve accomplished, you know, the majority of all of those goals and some of those that will be moving forward in our ongoing strategies. We’ve looked at how, you know, nationally, the creative sector is growing dramatically and that we are overperforming. And I think that there’s some ways for us to really focus and to continue to leverage this opportunity. One, we need to continue to attract, grow, and retain creative workers. I think we all know this, the knowledge workers are the workers of the 21st century. And the reality is, no one’s defined by geography anymore. Capital is global, workers are global, people can live wherever they want, especially if they want to work in these creative industries. And the growing industries are the ones where they have the most mobile and, dare I say, the most transient workers. And the ways to attract those folks with those high-paying jobs is to create communities that are dynamic and amazing. So part of what these strategies will do will support this, but I think really focusing on how do we retain those creative workers? As someone who struggles to, you know, hire qualified staff, like all of us do, I assume that all of the students that came out of the U of O Arts Administration Program would get their diploma and then walk over to my office and drop off their resume and demand to be hired immediately. And that’s not so. We’re not seeing as many of those really talented folks, and I know that in this group’s heard a lot around talent drain, but this is a strategy that we think has a lot of potential, and in a way that arts and culture has a unique opportunity to help grow economic prosperity. Next, by developing and supporting local television film industry. You know, the state of Oregon paid $246 million in wages in this sector last year in 2014. And while Eugene doesn’t have any specific programs to develop tours or to develop film or television industry, we could. And that’s a real opportunity, both in terms of direct economic impact, people hiring staff, renting equipment, et cetera, et cetera, permitting fees and whatnot, but it’s also a huge tourism driver. You know, when you see a beautiful place on film or on TV, you want to visit there. It drives a brand, it drives a unique identity. And Eugene has a history as a film location. I mean, we’re known as Animal House, but what’s our animal house of 2016? You know, what’s the film or television series that we could attract that could really help us both from an economic prosperity perspective and provide jobs, but really kind of shine a light on this amazing place that we live? Next is supporting creative incubators and makerspaces. I think you all know about Rain and Ferdi Lab, the local incubators that we partner with and support, which we’re doing even more and more collaboration with. But it’s also makerspaces, such as the one at the library that we’re developing as part of the Library of the Future, and making sure that as we’re developing downtown and we’re creating opportunities, that we’re carving out creative space, really, truly dedicated spaces for those kind of folks to feel comfortable and to have a place where they can really make their innovation shine, and frankly, where it can really help, you know, catalyze other activity in the area. Next, create an event-friendly city and grow cultural tourism. The lovely Colette Ramirez that I pointed out to you earlier attended an IFA International Festival of Events and Association Gathering. And when she was in a big session, really, she was called out a bit, or we were all sort of called out as an industry, and as the speaker just said, “Look, do you have an event-friendly city?” And we have to stop and ask ourselves that question. And, you know, and we don’t think the answer right now is yes. We do collaborate with lots of local community groups, with neighborhoods. We’re obviously doing a lot of things, right? Because we’ve attracted events like Track Town and, you know, getting towards 2021. But in what ways can we create more centralized services, where it’s a sort of the Fred Meyer, right? One-stop shop of getting event permitting, making sure that you have one way to book spaces, and having that coordinated effort? In addition, growing cultural tourism. I mean, we’re doing it as a matter of fact, as a matter of how we do our practice, but in what ways can we develop and produce festivals and events that attract both like our local community to come out and experience our city, but also bring in folks from out of town? Again, we live in a beautiful place, and we produce a lot of really crazy fun, wonderful events in this area. So if we could do that better, and we could also be really more of an asset to the event producers that come to our town, we think that there’s a lot of opportunity there. And next, develop a comprehensive placemaking program. Placemaking is really how we talk about a network of urban spaces. When we talk about plazas, such as the Holt Plaza or the park blocks, this is what we’re talking about. These are efforts towards placemaking. The Project for Public Spaces, which is the national and international experts on all things placemaking, really point out the priorities being around programming, management, and design. And we think that coming up with a really strategic plan that unites our public spaces, in particular, starting with downtown, and then hopefully to catalyze out into the neighborhoods, will really create a lot of economic prosperity, build beautiful downtown spaces, help attract those creative workers that want to live downtown, but they want to live in a downtown that feels like there are things happening, as well as, you know, creating space for all kinds of different communities to connect. There’s some really good news, and that just yesterday, it was announced that Project for Public Spaces has selected the state of Oregon as one of five states to do pilot placemaking training programs in partnership with Main Street Oregon. So we’ve already reached out to Main Street Oregon, so we’re going to have some additional resources in terms of designing and planning that. But this really seems like the next place for us to go. Our team is really doing a lot of placemaking work at the Holt Plaza or outside the Holt Center currently, and really looking towards next summer as an opportunity to expand that. Food carts, places to sit outside, programmed activities, and also non-programmed activities, pop-up libraries. These kind of activities create a lot of vitality and don’t really have to cost a lot. What they say at Project for Public Spaces, and this is the thing I keep repeating to everybody, is, you know, placemaking is where you allow community wisdom and common sense to shine. And we have a lot of community wisdom, and we have a lot of common sense. And I think that this is a great place to activate that knowledge we have in this community. So I’m excited to work with my friends in Planning and Development, a couple of whom are here today, on this project over the next few months. So we’ve talked about where we were, the CPR and the plan. We’ve really looked at how, you know, currently, we are both overperforming as an arts and culture sector, and that nationally, you know, creative industries are growing, and we’ve laid out some strategies for growth and for moving forward. So, you know, I have to tell you, the future is really bright in arts and culture, and particularly in creative industries. I think we all know that we’re at a time and a place of a lot of change happening in this community, and there’s a time to make a lot of really positive steps moving forward. So I’m excited to work with you all. And sorry to put more donuts at lunchtime in front of you. One question. I know in particular, there’s been a lot of conversation around Jacob’s Gallery and that, you know, we recently received notice that they were going to be closing their lease, and they were going to be disbanding that nonprofit. So I thought you might have some questions about that or anything else that you’d like to know about other details around the presentation.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Did you want to add anything, Renee? Okay. So I’ve got Greg, Betty, Alan, and Chris in the queue. Go ahead, Greg.
Yeah, thanks for that presentation. I think that was extremely enlightening. One of the things I want to get back to, and you referenced Richard Florida’s work earlier in this.
Yes.
And there’s a couple of questions that I have with regard to that, and I’ve read a number of his books, particularly, you know, The Rise of the Creative Class, The Flight of the Creative Class, The Great Reset. In particular, the things that he talks about with the three Ts, this technology, talent, tolerance, and transportation as being the key elements for retaining the kind of creative people that we need to make this go. So we have the Rain Accelerator, the potential with the incubators, the Bradford’s Building, the other things that are downtown here, but we have some holes in the game that need to be filled. And to retain that talent here and to be able to attract other talent is going to take some more infrastructure investment. And one of the things we talked about at the previous council meeting on Monday night was talking about specifically those investments in high-speed capacity around, you know, technology, internet, infrastructure, and that kind of thing, which I think we need to really focus on, and specifically, we focus on how we are going to, you know, facilitate that and pay for that. That’s one thing. But the other thing that I’m concerned about in having, you know, kids that are this, you know, this age, who have graduated from the University of Oregon and are moving on in other areas, is that, you know, Eugene does not still seem to place that is a sticking place for that talent. And, you know, my concern is losing that brain drain here that we really need to try to capture the talent that is here, be able to attract the other talent that’s coming in. I probably need a second round Mayor of the Day. But also, you know, looking at, you know, specifically what our connectivity is to our mega region, which is the Cascadia region. And I’ve noted that in Richard Florida’s work and other work similar to that, Eugene is left off the map, that this corridor is defined as Portland to Vancouver, Washington, and Eugene is not part of that. And so how can we better position ourselves to be part of, A, the mega-region concept that he talks about, and B, how we can better be positioned to retain the talent that we are growing indigently and are allowing to fly away, so to speak?
I think those are all great observances. In fact, in the earliest version of this presentation, I had a three-T slide.
I call it the fourth because I add transportation.
Because you add transportation to it, which I think makes a lot of sense. No, I think that makes a lot of sense. I hear what you’re saying. I think that there is a real opportunity for us as we move towards some of these strategies we talked about, to make sure that we’re telling our story. Because, yet, you’re right, Eugene isn’t necessarily always lumped into the mega-region. It’s the Portland-Vancouver. And, you know, as someone who moved here from Portland, I feel like Portland’s getting a little more attention than they need. It’s time for Eugene’s time in the sun. And I think part of, you know, what Portland and Vancouver’s rise, because it hasn’t been necessarily through growing creative jobs, because Portland’s one of the few regions that’s actually declined in creative jobs in the last five years, I just read a study this week.
this week. It hasn't been that there's been more creative jobs, it's there's been more attention, more stories told about that area. I mean, I hate to point back to the film and TV thing, but, you know, Portlandia did a lot, good and bad, for the reputation of the Portland-Vancouver area. And I think as much as we can tell our story about our successes, about what's happening in Eugene, we've been getting a ton of great media attention around the tech industry, around, you know, the Silicon Shire and the work that they've been doing. And I can't, you know, I can't support enough the idea that we need to have that high-speed infrastructure to support all those creative industries. I mean, the digital art media we talked about, looking at gaming, those other organizations, they need that high-speed infrastructure. So if we can get ahead of the game, maybe in tech, maybe kind of push our way ahead in ways that maybe larger communities can't quite do as nimbly as we can, I think there might be some opportunity there.
Councilor Taylor.
Thank you. First, a question. Do you think that Jacob's Gallery can be saved?
Well, Jacob's Gallery is a separate non-- so there's, just to clarify, so there's Jacob's Gallery, the space, and then there's Jacob's Gallery, the nonprofit, which is an independent organization which has decided that they are disbanding. So I would ask the board those questions, but everything I've heard from them is that they were ready. They, after 17 years of able and, you know, really heroic service to the community, they were ready to move on. And so we received notice when they gave us a letter telling us that they wanted to end their lease at the end of January. So can that space be saved? Absolutely. There's, it's not at risk. It's absolutely going to be, continue to be a part of the dynamic, you know, downtown arts and culture atmosphere that we have in Eugene. What it may look like in the future, I think I want to ask the community more questions, which is why we're having, on January 13th, we're doing a community listening session that's going to be facilitated by one of our erstwhile planning and development colleagues, who's really going to help us find out what are the community's interests in that space, and what ways can we make sure that it's still available and accessible, and it's still, you know, provides an opportunity for visual artists to have their work shown. You know, I think it's a new chapter. I don't think it's the end of the book. So I'm excited to see what happens next.
As I remember, the city used to support it.
Yes.
And then, when the city was cutting budget, as we've done a few times, this nonprofit group took it over. And so maybe it's time for the city--
Well, what happened was that the city, when the new nonprofit took over, the city provided basically bridge funding for several years. And the intention was always it would start at one level and sort of tier down as the organization built its own organizational capacity. I think that the gallery, like most galleries in this country, are really dealing with a business model that is not really making it in 2015 and beyond. It's just, it's partly a change in the industry, as art sales and things go online. There's not a lot of reason for folks to come down to a gallery if they can check out collections online. And so that's had some market forces at effect there. I think the gallery did a really heroic, great work for a long time, but we've also had other galleries in town close just in this last few months and around the country. So it's a tough business. I mean, being a visual artist is a tough job, and running a gallery is a really heroic task. And so, you know, my hope is we can find a model that makes more sense and is more sustainable for the future.
Yes, I know others have closed, which is more, which intensifies the need for that one.
Great.
And some of the biggest supporters have died recently. Actually, we used to get huge outcry if there was any threat to Jacob's Gallery, but some of those big supporters are no longer around. About increasing the audience for the arts, I think the Symphony at Cuthbert is one of the very best things that we, that the city does.
Yeah, absolutely.
I know, it makes, some people who would never have thought of going to the Symphony before will go because it's free, and then they may get an appetite for it and go again. And, which leads me to something else. If, have you ever thought of, is it possible, when a performance is not sold out, to, at the last minute, sell the tickets for half-price or fourth price or something?
You know, each of the organizations that come into the Holt Center actually have the option to do, I mean, you know, we serve as their ticketing office, but their ticketing strategy is up to them. So if they choose to do that, they can. For our Broadway shows, we do do that. We do rush tickets for some of the shows. And when we produce our own things, and essentially, when we act as the producer of the show, we do offer a lot of those as well.
I wonder if we could talk to the various organizations about that?
Yeah.
It would increase their future. If someone gets to go once for a small amount of money, then they're more likely to want to go again.
Right.
And I think that's something the city might encourage.
Yeah, in arts marketing, we really look at it as being, you know, if you can get someone to come twice within a month, like, that's sort of the golden ticket there. Once they've had multiple experiences, and so, you know, that's a lot of the work that our marketing team is helping work with the resident companies on, how can we do those kind of innovative promotions in fine ways for us to bring audiences back? You know, Yo-Yo Ma was here last week, right? Sold out, completely amazing packed house. And I know the Symphony right now is looking at all those new folks that came to the Symphony that wouldn't have, you know, that only come out for the headliners and finding ways to try to bring them back.
It was a different crowd, a different crowd.
Right.
And very crowded.
Yes, yes.
It was exciting.
Good for them, their 50th anniversary, they deserved a big packed house.
There was a feeling of excitement throughout the place, actually, that night. About Keesey Square, have you thought of, maybe, I don't know whether this comes within the purview of City Arts or not, but inviting schools to, school groups to perform there?
We don't program Keesey Square per se. We do some for certain events. You know, it's not an idea that has come across my desk recently, but it's something we can look at. You know, they're, you know, bringing school kids downtown for anything nowadays is harder and harder with funding cutbacks and busing and those sort of things. So that's kind of, you know, something I think of right away. I can't help it, I'm an arts administrator. I go, "How will we get the kids there?" But I think that's an interesting idea, and might be an interesting way to program that space.
Getting the kids downtown will also get a lot of other people downtown.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Not only the parents and grandparents, but other people who feel--
Right. I mean, we've learned that with All Hallows' Eugene and other events, when we have, you know, family-friendly, kid-friendly activities, the whole family comes out.
True.
Yeah, it's great.
And the Eugene celebration, this is within the purview of, it's in the area of entertainment at least. And I think we should, I think where the celebration started, it was local talent, maybe. I know it was supported by the city. And that was, I was here when that was, the budget was cut on that too. But if we could just have local talent and local food, and no admission charge, I think that would maybe revive that, and also bring more people downtown and help the local artists who could perform there. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Alan.
Yeah, great presentation, Tom. I mean, good hire, Renee.
He's a golden retriever, too.
Oh.
Have a golden retriever.
Awesome, me too.
Name is George, likes to play with Molly.
My golden retriever's name is Sophie. She likes to play with everybody. You guys are doing so much and achieving so much, really good job. The economic development stats are particularly impressive, 1739 full-time jobs is amazing. And I think the creative arts and culture is one of our competitive advantages from an economic development standpoint to attract people here and jobs and companies. And I agree that the high-speed internet is very important for our future economy in that area, for not only the gaming, but also the, all of the different arts and business in that area. That's why we're having a work session on it. I think the report card was great. It was pretty easy to read, and it was, although chock-full of acronyms and cultural service speak, but great. It shows all the amazing work that's being done. You know, there's only one strategy in here that you really haven't achieved, which is the Dedicated Endowment Fund. And I was wondering if you could speak to the status of that?
Sure, I could speak to it a little bit, but I might defer to Renee, because that sort of happened before I was here. But really, it was a matter of priorities and what we could get done in a certain amount of time. And at the time, the way that it's been shared with me was that it was really seen that ABAE and creating ABE is sort of the infrastructure group that could help maybe drive those kind of initiatives, became more of a priority. And that's really been successful. But in terms of other decisions around that, I'm not sure. I don't know if I said that correctly.
No, when we were looking at the model for the alliance, which became the Arts and Business Alliance, one of the conversations was, do we take on an endowment initiative? And it was decided pretty strongly that we, that wasn't necessarily the best strategy moving forward, because there was a lot of pushback from a number of the nonprofits and others in the community around competition for funds and the likes. And so it was really about how do we leverage the partnerships in the community to support initiatives and strategies that could better serve all. So I don't know that it won't get readdressed at some point down the road. The Arts and Business, or the Arts Loan Fund actually is an opportunity to fund in a different way that isn't necessarily an endowment model, but it provides services and opportunities. So that was more the strategy.
Yeah.
I think it's great that the Holt Center and the Cuthbert are both financially stable. I think they're great assets for the city. I did see Yo-Yo Ma, that was an amazing concert, and it was sold out, and great part of the 50th anniversary of the Eugene Symphony. The Broadway in Eugene's another great asset, we have a great show, I was really looking forward to seeing Book of Mormon and the other shows that are doing it. And then the Symphony in the Park, I've gone to every year, it's always a highlight, and it's a great way to attract people that wouldn't necessarily be involved in that, because it's a free concert. I'm interested in hearing more about the Jacob's Gallery and the next iteration of that as we move forward. I think that's important. The Eugene Celebration Parade, I think, you know, it's gone by the wayside, and I'm wondering if that's not something that Cultural Services shouldn't resurrect as maybe a city-sponsored thing. The parade, not necessarily the whole celebration, but the parade part, I think, is an important part of, become an important part of Eugene's culture. Is there, have we talked about that? I know we've talked about that, but--
Yeah. We did a, you know, we've been trying to kind of leverage, like, how do we take some of those events, those historical events, those things that sort of mean a lot to Eugenians, but kind of pull them forward? One example of the parade was with All Hallows' Eugene. It was actually the mayor who said, "Hey, what about slug queens? How can we involve slug queens and get them?" You know, because without Eugene Celebration, where are the slug queens parade? And if anything I've learned, working in this job, is that everybody cares about the slug queens. I had to have it explained to me a couple times when I first started here, but now I love it. And so we had a parade, the holiday costume, or the costume parade that was part of All Hallows', Eugene was led by the slug queens. And so when we look at All Hallows' Eugene, we think that might be a way to sort of bring forward some of those elements of Eugene Celebration, like the parade, that were really popular, and kind of grow that organically over time with events that are really kind of focused on downtown and bringing folks together.
Yeah, I'd like to see--
I love a parade. I'm always game for a parade. Who doesn't love a parade? Yeah.
Yeah, I know they're hard to organize, but yeah. One of the other things in here was that you hired a master artist, and I'm wondering if you could explain what that person does and their role.
I can a little bit. Isaac Marquez, who's our public art manager, actually works within more. The master artist was brought in as part of the City Hall project originally, to really kind of over, you know, to have an umbrella overview of the entire project. So oftentimes with public art projects, especially in capital investments, the artists, you know, that are involved in public art are brought in at the last minute to come and cite their work somewhere. And it wasn't part of the architect's vision, or how the architect thought their space would be viewed. And it's not necessarily integrated, nor are you given the opportunities to really, you know, have functional artwork, right? Like a beautiful carved stairway, like at the Holt Center, that's actually part of the public art collection. And so it was sort of influenced by that, you know? In what way can we have someone that's looking at the project holistically? So we think that's a strategy that's, you know, has proved some value. I think we're kind of tweaking with the model. And currently with City Hall, we are going to be bringing in several artists that are essentially going to be going through the call for artists. Once we've selected a small group that will be working on the project, or might potentially be working on the project, we're actually going to give them an opportunity to workshop and studio some of their work, to really kind of create, to fabricate some prototypes, and do it in a slightly different way. And so, and sort of influenced by that mass, that experience of working with a master artist. How can we bring people in earlier so that the artwork and the building and the place aren't all three separate elements, but that they're really integrated?
Yeah, that was my next question, which was, how is the new City Hall going to have, if it's integrated into the design, that works better than afterwards, and afterthoughts saying, "Well, maybe we should put a piece of art there," or something like that.
Yeah. I really appreciated the openness of the architects, the planning department, so everyone that's working on the City Hall project has had around having my team involved and engaged early on. And that's been really, I think, is going to be really successful on the final project. In addition, also the public space, the plaza outside City Hall, we've had a lot of conversations. And oftentimes, those conversations aren't had until there's, you know, people are digging up ground about what are we going to do in that space, how will it be programmed and managed? And so we're really kind of ahead of the game, I think. And, you know, and I credit that to the thoughtful process that we've been going through. It's not always easy or quick, I know that. But it is more thoughtful, I think, than some I've observed.
Two last quick questions. What more can the U of O do to play with us in this space? And what's the status of the People in Flight Airport art piece?
Oh, the U of O, we have a lot of really strong partnerships. You know, the U of O has some really, you know, really distinct missions, so we work with a lot of different groups. We work really closely with the Arts Administration Program. We're huge fans of theirs. We share students, we teach over there, we're back and forth. The Architecture School is working with us on a prototype project to kind of conceptualize what the Holt Plaza could look like someday, if we were to invest in developing that as public space. ABAE is working with U of O and with the Business School and extent, not, it's not kind of extension, Community Education, to kind of develop a program with some unique and innovative curriculum around how do we help ingest traditional business folks with creative skills? You know, creative visualization, design thinking, those sort of things. So there's some really kind of interesting projects happening in a lot of different pools. U of O's a great partner. I, you know, I can't complain about any level of connectivity or support that we've had from them, and there just seems to be more and more. The Media Arts Department, working with us on suburban projections, and the Dance Department, and, you know, I think we've got a really strong group of partners over there.
I can mention just briefly, in the airport, what I've asked them to do is figure out how to integrate that back into their new project. And I know there's--
At the airport?
At the airport, yeah. So they'll have some challenges just by virtue of how that's designed as far as the space available, but I've asked them to figure out how to do that. That's really, probably at least a year away, I think, before that project's finished. So it's a year to 18 months, but they'll return to the airport.
Good, I'm glad to hear that.
Chris?
I have one second left.
Want a second round?
No, I had one second left. I was just pointing that out.
You just used it.
Yeah. That was a five-second, one-second thing. That's what I do. I'm incredibly impressed and gratified with the presentation. In fact, all the little notes I took were things you already had on the slide, so I'm really pleased that you're already thinking and working on a lot of the stuff I would have mentioned. So just a couple of things. One, we talk a lot about the traditional arts and culture, and everybody knows what those are, and everybody's very supportive of them. And I really also, not to replace, or to supplement, or to take the place of, but to supplement and add on are all the new arts. And you talked about All Hallows' Eve. I had the opportunity, through my oldest son, to be involved in the 72-hour Film Festival.
Oh, good.
And what was impressive about that, and the reason I bring it up, is the incredible number of young filmmakers right here in this community. Fifty different filmmakers applied for that, and 41 films were produced in 72 hours and displayed at the Holt Center. And what impressed me was the enormous amount of creativity that exists here, these knowledge workers already in the community and ready to be creative in an area that has enormous economic potential. Movie-making of all kinds, digital media of all kinds, huge, huge. Look what it's done for Hollywood, look what it's done for Seattle and Vancouver. That potential, we are just right at the very beginning of something that could be enormously, and financially, and creatively profitable for us. But that creativity is absolutely built on connectivity. And so when we talk about high-speed internet, anything that has the word "digital" in front of it requires the ability to be connected. And so that means, not just for downtown, but for any creative digital art in this community, it has to be connected, those go together. And the folks that were involved in the 72-hour Film Festival are also involved in the Hackathon, which once again points out that connectivity there, and how a Hackathon can be an artistic as well as a digital creative function. And so you talked a little bit also about placemaking, and you just mentioned in passing the park blocks. I have become increasingly focused on the park blocks as a place that is enormously underutilized, to the point where people don't even think about the park blocks anymore as a place where we could do an enormous amount of this creative engagement. we could do an enormous amount of this creative engagement. And so I guess the challenge that I would ask is, are there opportunities? Are there proposals? Are there ideas that the creative community has begun to kick around in terms of what we could do with the park blocks in addition to other public gathering and engagement things we could do there? I think the park blocks is, is like another diamond in the rough waiting to be really developed into something incredibly wonderful in the community. Which leads me to my last point. Lots of communities talk about their commitment. We've got to figure out a way to translate through into actions. And I see lots of actions already talked about. I want us to think what those additional actions can be. And that, part of that requires our investment. And we have to figure out what that investment looks like.
Great. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. I think that's all great insight.
Any response on the park blocks question?
It's on our radar, too.
Yeah, it really is. I mean, you know, I've seen that space be wildly successful when it's programmed. And we had a, ABAE had a program this summer called Make a Band. And, you know, it was awesome. It was set up downtown in the park blocks. It was the first time I'd been to a really wildly attended event that wasn't Saturday Market or one of our traditional events. And it worked really beautifully well. Part of it, you know, this summer was kind of prototyping some events and seeing how they work in public space. You know, there's no, it's not by accident that Project for Placemaking, Project for Public Spaces puts management at the top of their priority list. It's like, it's, you know, management and programming are the most important things. You can let design follow. You can make the design work. But how do you manage it? And it's, when it's managed and when it's programmed, I think it's really successful, which to me shows that there's a lot of potential there. But you're right, it does take some investment and a management plan moving forward. And that, when I mentioned the placemaking plan, that's, that I'm working on with my friends in, in Planning and Development, it's going to be looking at downtown as a network of public spaces. So what does this network offer? And in what way do they have unique character or offer unique assets? I really love the park blocks. I can't wait to see them really shine. I agree.
What I would add too is, you know, of course, the council on Monday night, part of what your action was is to think about the parks blocks as a, a potential project kind of moving forward. And so I think that also, you, the council has jumpstarted that conversation a bit more formal way as well, which I think is really a positive. The other corollary or complimentary conversations, you know, the year round Farmers Market is still a conversation that's active. And that does have some impact in around the parks blocks. So the council will eventually be thinking about that as well.
So I put myself in the queue. Thank you for the presentation and the great, great work. I want to appreciate Councilor Evans' comments concerning how can we develop support and keep our local talent here because we have an awful lot of it. We have folks working in all the various media that is available in terms of artistic endeavors. And it's a huge asset and I think an under recognized asset that we have here. I want to appreciate the art that's been incorporated into projects like the skate park. It's really a beautiful enhancement to that project. I would love to find a way to find funding and an agreement from the Corner Store that is right across the street from the skate park on Jefferson and First. That right now is just a big concrete blight that occasionally gets graffiti on it. That would be a beautiful place for mural and really enhance that corner. But that's a little selfish comment because that's right around the street from my house. But you mentioned community wisdom, and I think that's so important. And again, to hearken to my neighborhood, the Whittaker Community Council has a member of the board who's a professional arts grant writer, who's, works at the University of Oregon, who's volunteered her time and has written a number of grants for the community council to add art to some of the new parking lots that are coming online in the neighborhood. And so I think that's again, kind of bringing that practical thing of a parking lot together with art enhancement that's going to be, you know, such an added benefit rather than just blank concrete walls and cars parked there. We actually have some more beauty in the neighborhood. So I just wanted to call that out and appreciate that. And then I wanted to mention the exciting event that's happening at the Holt Center on January 9th. An original Shakespeare folio is coming on tour throughout the country and it's going to be at the Holt Center. And that's, my understanding, a collaboration with the City of Eugene and the Oregon Shakespeare Festival is sending up performers to perform, I believe, some of King Lear. And also that set of costumes, that award winning costumes for the, from a University of Oregon production is also going to be coming back from its international tour to come back here to the Holt Center to be part of that presentation. So I just really wanted to call that out. I believe it's a free event.
Yes.
A free event on the evening of January 9th at the Holt Center. So I think that's a beautiful example of us putting ourselves on the map and really pulling together the great resources and talent that we have here locally. And just very excited about that. So, Councilor Evans, did you want a second round?
Yes, Councilor Soret. Couple of other things. Going back to Goal Five and the issue of neighborhoods within the context of the whole, you know, idea of developing the arts and culture economy. And trying to look at how we can, you know, better connect with some of the more underrepresented neighborhoods in our community. You know, specifically, you know, Whittaker has been one to, for a number of years. Bethel, there are other parts of the city that need to have more connectivity in terms of building that capacity within the context of the neighborhoods. So one of the ideas that I'm kind of pivoting towards is this, is the major transportation corridor that we have between downtown Eugene and Corvallis, which is 99. And the connectivity that we could have by having, you know, high capacity bus service that would go and service the, we're already having an experiment now with the LTD has been doing with the airport. But actually having that connectivity, because we got a lot of people that live here and work in Corvallis, people who work, who live in Corvallis and work here. And there's a lot of traffic that goes up and down that corridor, plus with the airport. And how can we best leverage that, that transportation corridor to enhance the development of our cultural, technological, you know, platform, you know, from a broader context, using Eugene as a base? That's one. And the second thing is, is that, you know, where's our GRIM at? I mean, I know we've got shapeshifters around town. I've seen them. But, you know, we need our GRIM, our Fargo without the blood and guts that, you know, we can, you know, definitely host and, you know, have that, those kinds of television and other, you know, internet based opportunities that we could definitely leverage here with the technology that's, that is now available. Everybody's got a camera. Everybody has production capacity. Some people have more talent that, in it than others. So how can we encourage the more talented, you know, producers and directors and actors in our community to produce that kind of high quality work that could be marketable across the country and ultimately be a sales pitch for our community? A signature for our community more than a sales pitch.
Yeah, I think there's a, there's a pretty wide variety of ways that we could create programs that would support film and television industry. I mean, some communities, you know, you look at Park City, Utah has built a gigantic soundstage just outside of town, 150,000 square foot facility specifically to lure film and television business, which they don't actually quite have yet. It's a build it if you, and they will come scenario, but an exciting one. All the way down to, you know, frankly, this is one of those businesses and one of those industries where you really have to have advocates out in the field. And, and the communities that are the most successful have, you know, folks within staff or their city staff or appointed groups that are responsible for wooing, frankly, that work. Vancouver, B.C. did really well in terms of developing a film industry because they created some amazing subsidies, which are tax subsidies, which can be controversial. So it's something to look at, but also something to think, you know, think a little bit about. You know, Los Angeles lost a huge amount of filming when the subsidy program sort of sprung up around the country. And there's different areas that have tried that as a, as a strategy.
They went to New Zealand.
Yeah. New Zealand's huge because they, you know, I mean, they do a 60% payback on some of that. 60%. I mean, that's pretty significant. And a lot of what they're banking on is essentially they're going to hand, hand those tax dollars back and counting on the tourism driver, which frankly, the Lord of the Rings series has driven more tourism to New Zealand and Australia than I think they've said basically any ever effort they've ever done in the history since, you know, the first boat of prisoners arrived in Australia or whatever. So, you know, I mean, this has significant, significant impact. And I don't know that that's what we need to, I don't know that we have to go that far. But part around just having an articulated vision around what filmmakers and what creatives can find when they come here and getting those stories out. You know, one thing we referred was creative spaces. You know, having creative space where filmmakers can actually work and shoot is important. Having high speed internet so that they can, you know, upload dailies. You know, just a couple of years ago, when I, when I lived in Portland and worked for the mayor, we worked on Portlandia and GRIM. And a huge portion of what helped us move us in our, in, you know, in terms of high speed was that they were literally shipping, you know, right? Like digital film down to LA every single day because there wasn't enough bandwidth to accommodate being able to send it digitally or using other mechanisms. I mean, there's these simple technology interventions that have created a lot of opportunity. And, you know, similar to other creative stuff we talked about, the film industry isn't necessarily based on place anymore. You don't have to be in LA. And, you know, if you said, yeah, student filmmakers, that sort of thing. So affordable studio space for, you know, local and up and coming filmmakers to work and, and, you know, yeah, they can do it at home, but that kind of collaborative work happens better in a group. All the way to having a film permitting pro, we don't have an articulated film permitting process or film liaison in the City of Eugene. We have some great city staff that have sort of taken that up as part of their job. And, you know, those, sometimes those calls get bounced around. Where can we shoot an old church with the river running by it? Or, you know, Diners Drive-Ins and Dives is in town and needs a bunch of parking permits. You know, those things get handled ad hoc. But if we had an articulated strategy and resources to support it, it would be a great place to start. You know, I don't want 150,000 square foot facility and that's not going to be the proposal you get from us. It's going to be, you know, what are those interventions we already have and how can we leverage our connections?
All right. Well, thank you so much.
Welcome.
Really appreciate the work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next up, we've got introduction to 350 ppm greenhouse gas target.
We should have Babe and Matt take it away.
All right. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. I just want to say it's my professional goal to work in a sector that's overperforming. That sounds awesome. My name's Matt McCray.
He's the judge of that.
You'll have to judge it out. My name's Matt McCray and I'm a climate and energy analyst for the city. And with me is Babe, who's the sustainability liaison, Babe Sullivan. We're just coming to you with a bit of information. And my aim is to spend 15 minutes or less just covering a bit of background information and leave the rest of the time for discussion. I'll be covering a lot of information, but you're likely going to be familiar with most of it. I found that over the past week and a half, as we see information coming out of Paris climate talks, there were a lot of facts and figures and terms that aren't all, it's not always clear where those are coming from. So my aim is to try and address some of those because they're important for our work, too. So for this reason, we're wanting to take a short period of time just to explain or provide viewers at home with the scientific basis for a 350 target. So again, this is just the introduction and we'll be back early next year to dive into the details of what it would mean for Eugene. After the brief presentation, I'll be looking for, to you for clarifying questions. So you all recall that in 2014, in July, you passed a climate recovery ordinance that does a number of things. I'm just going to run through them briefly. Clarifies and codifies existing goals. We have an internal carbon neutral city operations goal by 2020 and a community wide goal to reduce community wide fossil fuel use 50% by 2030. It also called for an assessment of current efforts, and we brought that back to you last February. It called for targets and benchmarks to achieve existing goals. And we just discussed that with you just a few weeks ago. It calls for development of a science based community greenhouse gas reduction goal. And that's what we're talking about today. This is the first of a few, of several installments. It also calls for regular progress reports back to you and establishes a process of analysis, reporting and readjustment if community or internal targets are not being met. So you're familiar with all of those. And then we're going to just provide a brief video here. We're going to start with a short clip from Frank Capra, released in 1958. You've seen this one. It's great. Oh, oh, sorry.
Extremely dangerous questions because with our present knowledge, we have no idea what would happen. Even now, man may be unwittingly changing the world's climate through the waste products of his civilization. Due to our release through factories and automobiles every year of more than six billion tons of carbon dioxide, which helps air absorb heat from the sun, our atmosphere seems to be getting warmer. This is bad. Well, it's been calculated, a few degrees rise in the earth's temperature would melt the polar ice caps. And if this happens, an inland sea would fill a good portion of the Mississippi Valley. Tourists in glass bottom boats would be viewing the drowned towers of Miami through 150 feet of tropical water. For in weather, we're not only dealing with forces of a far greater variety than even the atomic physicists encounters, but with life itself.
So while the glass bottom boat scenario may not be exactly a certainty, and our understanding of climate science has evolved dramatically over the last 60 years. The point here is that we understood the fundamentals of this some 60 years ago. This is not new information. So I'm going to really briefly, can you forward that for me, Beth? It gets stuck for some reason after that video. There, there we go. I'll go back one. I'm really going to briefly hit on a few points here. One, not all the carbon is the same. I'm going to touch on the greenhouse gas effect. You're probably familiar with it. I'm going to talk about the correlation between carbon and temperature. And I'm going to talk about climate feedbacks and then wrap up with next steps. So you've probably seen this before. This is a diagram of the carbon cycle. You all probably are familiar that there's carbon dioxide in the atmosphere and that it gets through sunlight and photosynthesis gets put into plants. Plants use it to grow and, and a lot of that carbon is stored in the trees of trunks. And in fact, our forests are a huge store of carbon. But when trees die, they either decompose or they burn and they release that carbon back up into the atmosphere. So it's constantly moving around. The same with animals, carbon dioxide going in and out of animals into the soil and, and circulating into the ocean as well and then back up into the atmosphere. So it's constantly moving around. Here is the point. What's important here is that the amount of carbon dioxide in this cycle has remained fairly stable over the past 10,000 years. And that the amount of the carbon dioxide can increase when we burn fossil fuels. So doing things like driving gas powered cars and trucks and burning natural gas to heat homes and burning coal for electricity actually pulls carbon from out of, out of deep storage where it was underground and then adds it. So you can see I just added on the right there. It's, it's adding new carbon out, out of deep storage and adding it into this cycle that's happening among, at the surface between the atmosphere, the ocean and the soil. And so thereby throwing the cycle out of balance. What's really interesting is that we can measure the amount of carbon dioxide that's in the atmosphere. It's measured in parts per million. That's where the PPM comes from here. Right now, we're at 400 parts per million of carbon dioxide in the atmosphere, up from about 280 parts per million in pre-industrial time, 100 years ago. So this is the result of digging up buried carbon and adding it to the atmosphere by burning it. And here's a chart of that. The atmospheric carbon being measured over time on the left is 1960, on the right is 2015. And on the left, you can see the, the grade there starting at about just 315 and moving on up. And as I mentioned, we're now at about 400. So note that 350 is kind of right here in the middle of the chart. And that's the, the basis for our discussion. It's considered the safe level of carbon dioxide in the, in the atmosphere. And it's the basis for our 350 target. Certainly you're noting, well, we're beyond that already. And we'll, we'll talk about that and how we address that, that issue. But this is just to give you a reference point of what we're talking about. So scientific research tells us that increasing concentrations then of carbon dioxide in atmosphere result in warmer average global temperatures. So that's just due to the greenhouse gas effect, or the greenhouse effect. Sunlight comes in through the atmosphere. It hits the globe and warms up. Some of the sunlight is reflected back out into space, but much of it gets trapped by greenhouse gases. So this, this layer here around the top, which is carbon dioxide and other greenhouse gases, and it works much like glass in a greenhouse, hence the name, and reflects the heat back and, and keeps us warm. And it's the only reason that the planet is livable. But if we have too many greenhouse gases, they act like a blanket and increase the amount of heat that's retained. So here's the chart. This is showing greenhouse gas emissions and temperature and just making the point that they are very strongly related here. On the left, 1880, on the right, 2013. And we can see here that the yellow is carbon dioxide, the, the concentration of carbon dioxide, and the red that moves up and down is temperature. And there are a few things that are important to note here, is that the increase in carbon dioxide does not immediately result in warming. There's a delay between the time that carbon dioxide or other emissions are released in the atmosphere and the time that the warming actually happens. In fact, it's somewhere on the order of a, a 40 year lag. So this isn't going to show up very well, I'm afraid. But warming that's happening up here, right where we are right now, comes from emissions that were occurring somewhere in the 1970s. So when we extend that, you can imagine if we stop emitting emissions, like carbon emissions today, we still have warming that's kind of baked into the cake, so to speak. Greenhouse gas emissions stay in the atmosphere for decades to centuries. And so reducing emissions in any one year is not the goal. It's really the cumulative emissions that are important to focus on. So far as a globe, we've witnessed the effects from just one degree centigrade warming over pre-industrial temperatures. So again, here, this is where we were in 1880 and we're about a degree warmer now. And we're seeing pretty, pretty dramatic effects in ice melt and increase in forest fires and more severe storms. Importantly, climate scientists didn't expect one degree of warming to have such a. Importantly, climate scientists didn't expect one degree of warming to have such a significant effect. The real concern is that somewhere at or before two degrees of warming, natural processes called feedbacks start to kick in and magnify the warming, and we lose the ability to avoid runaway climate change. So feedbacks are, there are several of them within the climate system. I'm just going to touch on a couple. They're natural processes that affect the speed and amount of warming. The most concerning are those that magnify the speed of warming. So for example, Arctic sea ice, when sunlight comes down from, from the sun and it hits the globe, when it hits the ice, which is a highly reflective white surface that reflects a lot of the light back up and out, back into space. But if there is less ice surface there, it's replaced by dark ocean surface, and that, then more of that light is captured. It goes into the ocean, and goes from light and turns into heat, and thereby creating more heat, further increasing the amount of ice melt, creating more heat, and it causes a feedback. Here is our ice cap in 1979. This is the September, which is the lowest level of sea ice in any given year. In 1979, it looked like this, and in 2007, it looked like that. So we're already starting to see sea ice that's retreating, and we're seeing some of that feedback starting to happen. Another example of feedbacks, rainforests, like this is an image of a forest in Borneo. Rainforests, if they dry out just a little bit, can be dramatically affected. We can see a drastic die-off of trees on a landscape scale, and then fires that burn those, release that carbon dioxide that was stored in those trees into the air. And so those trees that were acting as a sink are now acting as a source of carbon dioxide. And that's true for other forests as well, not just rainforests. And one more to point out, this is Arctic permafrost. When we go up into the Arctic, there is a huge amount of carbon that's stored in the soil, that's frozen in soil. So it's old plant materials and animals that have been frozen into sublayers of soil. And as that defrosts, those animals and plants decay, and it releases methane into the atmosphere, which is a very potent greenhouse gas, more potent than carbon dioxide. So these are the feedbacks that are really the cause of concern. In fact, scientists go up into the north, and after lakes have frozen over, the methane accumulates underneath the surface of the ice, and they can make a hole in the ice and actually ignite the methane that's coming off of, coming off of the ice. So it's, it's really a pretty significant source of emissions. So again, this is just to lay the groundwork for our future discussion, and I'm just going to recap here, that rising CO2 causes rising temperatures, that we do have an influence on the CO2 in the atmosphere. Our actions here in Eugene matter, and as you know, we're achieving reductions. We've talked about that before. We're seeing our emissions annually go down, which is great. We're headed in the right direction. And our investments and decisions over the next couple of decades will continue to influence our community-wide emissions. The level of 350 parts per million is what scientists tell us would be most likely to avoid those feedbacks, and that's why 350. And lastly, we'll come back to you with another future work session to talk about what a 350 target looks like for Eugene.
All right. Thank you so much. So I've got Greg, Alan, and myself in the queue.
So I have a question about the local effects of greenhouse gas emissions. So in the last few years, one of the things that I've noticed, a number of us around the table have probably noticed the same thing, because we've talked about it, is the fact that we have turkeys, cougars, other animals that are around, you know, the city perimeters that seem to be coming more and more into the living space, quite frankly, just as much as, you know, is happening in the Arctic, where you have polar bears that are seeking their natural habitat, and their habitat has disappeared because it's basically melted away. And there are other animals in the same, in the same, you know, boat with, with polar bears around that, as their habitat is disappearing, and so they're having to go further and further inland or in other places to find, you know, habitat that is compatible with their, their lives. Is this one of the effects that we're seeing locally with, you know, when I came here 30 years ago, the deer would no problem in South Eugene. You just, that was part of the landscape. But you have more animals that are coming into the, you know, urban landscape that have been, you know, seen before, and I'm wondering if that is one of the residual effects of what we're seeing globally.
So I'm not aware that there's a connection between greenhouse gas emissions and movement of animals, at least on a very local scale. There is in, in long-term migrations of animals, but I'm not aware that it makes a big difference for us here locally in the movement of animals that you're talking about. I think probably habitat fragmentation, you know, breaking apart habitat from large chunks into small pieces that are then occupied or used in other ways may contribute to that. One thing I would say is, when it comes to wildlife, is that we do see impacts on fish. So this last year, for example, we had a really unique year, right? Not a lot, no snowpack up at the pass level, which was really, really unusual, and that results in very low stream flows in September, and, and really bad effects on our fish populations. So really, the fish are the, the animals that we would expect to see most dramatically affected here in, in our area by, by climate change.
Anything else? Nope. Alan.
Yeah, I had a personal experience of climate change impacts. I've been going to Hawaii for several years and doing scuba diving there, and this last year, we went there, we went scuba diving, and the big formations of coral were completely bleached white, bright white, and never seen that before. And people who worked there for 30, 40 years have never seen that before either, and not sure if it's permanent, but it was certainly very, very eye-opening and very, very startling. I think this great presentation, by the way, and a good timing on the heels of the historic agreement that was in Paris, that where the world came together to reduce greenhouse gas emissions to avoid the catastrophic impacts of climate change. Sea level rise is one in particular that has really scary impacts for me. It has the potential of putting millions of people that are in low-lying areas and on islands in the Pacific and in the Atlantic, especially in the Pacific, having their homes be flooded and, and underwater, uninhabitable. And our call back managing a project a couple of years ago, where we looked at the climate change impacts on the, the water, wastewater infrastructure for the San Francisco Bay Area, and it said that there was a 20 to 100-inch increase in sea level rise, which abstractly doesn't mean a lot, but it put San Francisco International Airport underwater, it put Oakland Airport underwater, it put 101 and 880 underwater, as well as an enormous amount of, of water, wastewater infrastructure that's surrounded on the coastal areas and baylands underwater. And, and the cost of doing nothing really has not been fully vetted and understood. And, but just that example showed to me, anyway, that the, the cost is going to be in the trillions and trillions of dollars, and probably five to 10 times more than, than what it costs to have prevented having this occur. And I think the difference between what happened previously at the world stage and what happened in Paris was that it relied on having countries come to the table with their commitments to reducing greenhouse gas emissions and doing what they can, and drawing out of that success, the CRO is all about what our community can do in this global effort to do what we can and what we should be doing. And, and that's what the, what I think this is all about. I sit on the Global Warning Commission and ask the Chair, Angus Duncan, if he could be available, if the council wanted to have him talk about the state's plan for meeting its greenhouse gas reduction impacts, and he said he'd certainly be willing to do that, and all the measures it takes to actually meet our plan, which is a good news, bad news plan. The good news is that we know how to achieve the goals. The bad news is, none of the measures in the plan are actually in place, which is somewhat true for Eugene's plan as well. So I'm eager to agree on a goal and then move into that implementation phase and get the plan moving on.
Yeah, great. Thanks. So I had some comments, and then I've got Chris in the queue.
Betty.
Oh, I'm sorry, Betty. And then Betty. Thank you.
So thank you, Matt, for the presentation and the work, and I definitely agree that our actions here in Eugene matter. And I also think we shouldn't minimize the significance of the action we took when we passed this ordinance. I think it's a big deal, and I think the climate summit in Paris really pointed to that, as they talked about the fact that they decided not to enshrine those goals in any kind of law or way that can hold each other accountable in a legal sense. So, and I think one of the other messages coming out of that summit was that local action is going to be vital to helping nations meet the goals that were set in Paris. So I just want to remind us that we have an opportunity to take advantage of that momentum and take real steps to move our community forward. The urgency is real. You know, those, that Frank Capra film of collapsing glaciers, that's what's happening right now. And, you know, the rest of the world is apparently ready to join us in this work. So locally, I think we have a transit agency that shares our goals around this. We have a university with a great deal of expertise. We have a growing tech sector that's developing new technologies that can help us address this work. And we have a real, a growing community consensus that action is needed here and needed now. And we have the expertise within our own city staff to work on this. So we have no excuses for not taking advantage of the resources and lead in this in a real way. And I want to reiterate what Mayor Piercey said, I think, at our Monday 5:30 work session. She mentioned that she's now joined in a West Coast mayor's collaborative that has identified addressing climate change as, as a region, as one of their major efforts. This was the mayors of San Francisco, Los Angeles, Seattle, and Portland. So we have a chance to lead as a smaller city and influence the efforts of these major cities, and show other cities of our size that they can and, and must be part of the solution. So I'm very eager for us to reconvene in the new year and see some real specific goals and a plan for meeting those goals in early 2016.
Chris.
Thank you. Movie was interesting in that it was part of a Disney series. Disney produced those, and shows how forward-thinking Disney was. He really was a kind of a futurist from that standpoint. I think this is really important work, and I am really interested in how we're going to meet the ambitious targets we're talking about. I think that in order to get to those targets, and I think they, just based on the information we have, we do have to set targets, and we do have to reach them. But the, the whole point I'm bringing up, I guess the question I'm asking is, as we begin to identify specific strategies, we have to be conscious of how those strategies will actually be able to be implemented. What I'm getting at is, I think there is a very high level of interest in doing something about the environment. I think if you were to ask the majority of people in the community, you would hear universal commitment to doing something about the environment, that this problem is recognized. But what I've learned through envision Eugene and some of our other processes we've done recently is, that interest doesn't always translate through into commitment when the time comes. When you say, okay, you're all committed to environmental improvement, here's a specific strategy, and people go, well, I didn't mean that. And so what we need to do is, as you work on these strategies, we need to have a good sense of what will be the level of commitment to that strategy, not only in the community as a whole, but at this table. Because it's going to require a certain level of will for us if we do want to implement strategies. And we have to know what we're working with here, and it's not sufficient to say, well, you know, the community supports this. The community supports it as a theory, but if we're going to start talking strategies, I want to know where that, how that translates through, because that will become very critical to us when we start actually making decisions. And so when you come back, or when we have work sessions, and we start talking about specific strategies, it will be important to know what that looks like when you actually propose it to this community. And I'm not saying that we shouldn't go there, but I need to know what level of will it is going to take from us and our community in order to get there, because it will involve some significant sacrifices. And when you start asking people to sacrifice, you need to be able to articulate why they should make those kinds of sacrifices.
Yeah, good point. If I, if I may respond, there's certainly concern about bringing, you know, well, first, most of the strategies that we would take to get us there are outlined in our existing climate action plan. It's just a different degree of commitment and investment to get there. So there aren't a whole bunch of brand-new things that we haven't, as a group, considered. But, but yes, I mean, when we start to talk about implementation in...
We have to test commitment to those.
No doubt, no doubt. And so one of the questions I have for you, then, is, how do we bring that back and have a conversation about them in a way that's, where it's not frightening to people? Because that has been part of our discussion, is, you know, how do we, how do we talk about this without anybody saying, ah, they're going to, you know, take away our cars?
I love it. Absolutely.
How do, so anyway, it's something that I would welcome from all of you, is how to best do that most effectively.
So I've got Betty and Greg in the queue, and then we'll be out of time.
Thank you. If I only take one minute, we won't be. I'm interested in seeing what we're actually going to do. Everyone says it's so great you passed this ordinance, and, and we've had many people, including a lot of children, come and ask us to do something. So I wonder how soon we're going to do something. And then another question is, years ago, we passed a rather strong tree ordinance, and it was remanded. We've never taken it up again. And I wonder if you're going to, if we're going to discuss that again. Every time, every year when we had our plan to rank things, the tree ordinance was way down at the bottom, and I keep, kept for years suggesting we move it up to the top, but it never happened. And the trees, preserving the trees is something that we can do locally.
Yeah.
As well as take a stand on the forests outside our city.
Right.
Do you have any comment on either of those things?
I, I do. One, a quick reminder that when we first met with you in February, we, we mentioned that we were going to focus on our internal emissions first. So that's really where our focus has been over the last 12 months, is getting that internal plan put in, put together. And so you'll see that early next year, and then the focus will shift to the community-wide plan. So yeah, just a reminder of where we are on that. As far as the tree ordinance, I'm not, absolutely, there's a huge connection between our urban forests and how much energy we use, and, and the health of our community. So whether or not that tree ordinance is something that we'll take up as a part of the, the climate planning work, I don't, I don't know.
Anything else, Betty?
How about auto emissions? I think Arap is going to discuss that sometime soon, but I don't know how far we'll get. I was reminded yesterday when I was driving behind a truck that almost choked me.
Yeah.
I could, I didn't know, my windows weren't open, but it was coming into my car.
I've had conversations with the folks at Oregon DEQ who oversee the auto emissions programs and require cities like Portland that have, that aren't meeting their air quality standards to have auto checks. We don't have that air quality problem here. Not that we don't have air quality problems, but that it doesn't meet the threshold that DEQ has in place, or that the EPA has in place. So we would electively be doing, be putting that in place. When talking with folks at DEQ, they're not aware of any city that's opted to do that. That doesn't mean we couldn't or shouldn't. It just means that there aren't examples of that to look at at this point. But that said, there is absolutely a correlation between poorly operating vehicles and their fuel efficiency. So it's not just about particulate emissions. It is about their efficiency and how much fuel they're running through. So, you know, is that a huge lever in the big scheme of things that we're paying attention to on greenhouse gas emissions from Eugene? I don't know. But it's certainly, it's, it's real. What you're pointing out is certainly a source of emissions, both particulate and greenhouse gas emissions, that we can pay attention to.
Thank you.
Greg.
Thanks. One of the things that I, that comes to mind for me is the fact that we have had a number of people frustrated by the pace and the speed of implementation of the climate recovery ordinance from the perspective of the city. And I know that a lot of these things take time, and, you know, as been pointed out to us many times, we don't have time. So in that vein, are there pieces of low-hanging fruit that can jumpstart us in the direction that we need to be going in terms of the ordinance that we can start to do immediately or in the very near future that will be significant wins for us, that move us in that direction towards the bigger pieces of the, of the plan?
Yes, absolutely. So again, to reiterate that we have a climate action plan that lays out some of those actions. It doesn't tell you which ones are big and which ones are small. I recognize that. Of all the things that we, as a city organization, manage, you know, the transportation decisions are probably the biggest one we have the greatest control over, and it's a fairly significant source of emissions for us within the community. So, you know, the transportation decisions that, that you all are overseeing is an important place, I think, to pay attention. The other thing, and you've already endorsed this, is, is asking the state to put a price on carbon. There's, everything that I've seen suggests there's no way we'll meet ambitious targets without a price on carbon. So as you know, the state legislature, legislature is meeting again shortly. So as you know, the state legislature this year is meeting again shortly, and they will be considering, as I understand it, they're going to be considering a price on carbon, a cap and trade, much like what California has. So, you know, reiterating desire for, for something on that level would be, in my view, a really significant change in a short period of time.
Anything else? Nope. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks.
And with that, the City Council is adjourned for the rest of the year.
That's a great thing to say.